Man, feels like the first time. So, welcome, everybody. Please silence your cellphones. We are also on live TV tonight on our YouTube channel, so keep that in mind when you're speaking out loud. Trustees, please turn your microphones on when you speak. If there are audience members and it looks like we have a good showing this evening, thank you for coming. Please fill out the blue comment forums and hand them to Deb if you have something on your mind that you'd like to share with us. Public comment is taken for items not on the agenda. Each speaker is given five minutes. Public comment for items on the agenda is taken at the time of the item. Each speaker is also given five minutes. And before we get rolling, we might as well, here are some of the ideas that we have to share with you about public comment. As a reminder, you will have five minutes for public comment. We ask that you please state your name clearly when you address the board. Nicole Glensher will set the timer for five minutes. If you've not completed your comment, when the timer rings, I will immediately inform you that your time is up. You may then leave any written document you have with the executive assistant for the board's information. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no one is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because those comments are made at a public meeting. And then, I could read it again, but I think we're good to go. Steve, welcome to your first board meeting, and I'm hoping you could lead us in the flag salute.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deb, do we have a report out from closed session?
Yes, regarding item B8, consideration of classified leave of absence. It was moved by Barrett and seconded by Van Sant to deny a classified employee's request for a leave of absence. It was taken roll call vote seven to zero. And regarding another classified employee leave of absence request, it was moved by Mulgarde and seconded by Diaz to deny the leave of absence request, and that was a roll call vote seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Do we have approval of the agenda? Do we?
We have a couple of changes, President Nelson.
Thank you.
We would like to pull item D7. We will bring that forward to a future meeting, so we're going to ask that item D7 not be considered tonight. And then, we would like to request that item E1 and E2, those are the public hearings regarding River Oak Charter School and Tree of Life, that those get moved after item D2.
I move the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Item C5, our student advisory report.
Hi, everyone. This is Dawn. There we go. So, I wanted to start off by saying that fall sports at Ukiah High School are coming to an end. So, girls tennis just finished its last week with the round of NBL championships happening, and something exciting is that junior Emma Dolan finished as second singles player in the whole league. Girls golf ended as well, having advanced to the NCS level. Water polo's last game was unfortunately canceled owing to the fires, but their season is now over, and multiple senior nights occurred last week for all those sports. And the night for all UHS Sports Awards is coming up next Wednesday on November 20th. Something that's been, moving on from sports, something that's been on a lot of senior minds lately is college applications. And the first round were due two weeks ago during the power outage, but I just wanted to share that even though this was happening in such an unfortunate time, teachers and students still collaborated even with the loss of Wi-Fi to make sure that all early action and decision applicants got their applications in on time. We also just hosted an ASB meeting to vote on our winter ball, which will happen on December 7th. Additionally, the leadership class at the high school led by our ASB president, Emma Flameng, are also beginning to plan the toy drive we do in collaboration with Ukiah's Christmas effort, where high school classes can adopt a family and bring Christmas presents for that family as a competition with other classes to bring the most. And then, moving on to PBIS, the high school initiative, I was told that staff, including admin teachers and classified staff, will hopefully be getting shirts to promote the high school's ICPC initiative if the funds become available. Two leadership students, Emma Dolan and Anthony Baroza, will be also organizing a student competition open to all students at the high school of creating a logo to continue to brand and advertise the four pillars of integrity, compassion, productivity, and creativity, and this design would be visible around campus in various ways. Related to that, the welding teacher at the high school is helping to create keychains with the four pillar words on them as positive rewards for students. And I just wanted to finish by saying that last night, UHS senior Carter Duncan committed to play D1 baseball for San Jose State, who if I did my research correctly, is the first senior to commit in the class of 2020. So, I just wanted to end on an exciting note for that.
Thank you very much. On to item C6, public comment for items not on the agenda. I have two so far. I have two. And Pam McElroy, if you could join us first, that would be wonderful.
So, I wanted to bring to your attention, the last May, UTA passed a climate action resolution. And you have a copy of that resolution in case you haven't seen it. And there are five, what I would call, action items that UTA listed in the resolution. One of them is urging our school district to form a multi-stakeholder committee to develop a climate action plan for the district. I was inspired to speak to you after reading a book called Climate of Hope. I was encouraged by the examples. And why are you laughing? Trustee Van Sant?
I was encouraged by the examples provided in the book about how cities, businesses, and citizens can work together to reduce our carbon footprint. Heating and cooling buildings is a major contributor to our carbon footprint, and I believe that listed in the facility's use plan is work to, is to work to or replace many of the HVAC systems in our schools. And this seems like a perfect time for the district to form this climate action committee to support the district's work and innovation while our facilities are being updated. What better way to get the community behind the bond than to show the steps that UUSD will be taking to reduce its carbon footprint while updating our schools? I know that we already have or are planning on installing solar panels on the outlying schools, and this is a great first step, and thank you for doing that. My question is, what else can we do? After reading this book, I do have hope that together we may be able to stabilize the climate, but we can't stop after one action. We must continue to work and look for solutions in all parts of our lives so that our students will have a livable planet in the future.
Thank you very much. And our second public comment would be Ann Wilson.
Thank you Superintendent Cuban and board members for hearing me tonight. I was, I am inspired also by saving the planet for our children, and one of my passions is to help clean up our bay and our creeks and our school campus from the plastic waste. I am, I am also, I have been looking in our cafeteria, and I find that there's a lot, okay, first of all, I want to say thank you for getting these out of our schools, this little package that we used to use for years and years of a straw, a napkin, and a fork or a spoon fork. If a kid just needed a straw to drink their, or if they just needed a napkin, they were taking this and throwing the rest out. And this is excellent that we eliminated this triple waste potential. So, I'm very, I'm encouraged by that. And also, I'm encouraged by our hydration stations at our school, where people are using less plastic bottle waste, and kids are filling their bottles, and that's excellent. And so, thank you for this support that we've gotten over the years. But what I'm concerned about now is, of course, since we don't have this anymore, we have these plastic utensils at our school. And there's little dispensers, and they're not recyclable. They could be washed, but they're not being washed, and they're being thrown out. So, for, we serve breakfast, a second breakfast, we serve lunch, and we serve after-school snacks. And I think that we are making a huge contribution to the waste, to the landfills with these unrecyclable, undecomposing plastic utensils. And I cannot, I would love it if our district would go back to stainless steel. My school site said they have stainless steel already, but I know there is, you know, we could have, they have a dishwasher, a lot of school sites have a dishwasher. Could these be run through the dishwasher, sterilized that way, and reused at our cafeterias? This would be an excellent improvement in our waste disposal. Okay, so, I hope that you will consider that. Let's see, next. These single-use plastic water cups are available for kids to have water, and there's a dispenser, water dispenser, but they're also being thrown out. And we all know that the recycling system in our state and our country is broken, where only 9% of plastic is recycled. So, even with the best intentions, these are probably not going to be recycled. So, I would like to see if our school could either give a water fountain in our cafeteria or provide paper, you know, compostable cups so that kids could drink water freely but also not be spoiling the environment for the future. And my third, my third, oh yeah, also, these are getting filled, there's a similar plastic cup now that is being used to put snacks for children in, like three pieces of an orange with a top, with a little plastic top. So, that was my, my cafeteria had those for the after-school snack, and they looked beautiful, all filled with their little treats with a snap top for hygacity, but I think that it's just extreme, the use of plastic, whereas we could drop their food into little boxes, which we already have on the campus. So, I'm sure you probably agree when you look around and see plastic everywhere, everywhere, and if we could just eliminate some of it in our huge system. And the last one is Styrofoam. One more minute? Okay. Styrofoam is being used in our cafeteria, and we know that it's completely non-recyclable, and its health attributes are very questionable. Some studies show that styrene leaches into warm food, and it is toxic. And the manufacture of Styrofoam is completely toxic to the communities that live around that. So, and it's a huge part of the plastic problem in our oceans, when it breaks down to tiny beads and fish are eating it. I think that our ocean is becoming very, very acidic. We really need to eliminate Styrofoam use in our school. At our school, there was nacho cheese being poured into Styrofoam cups yesterday, and chips in plastic bags, and that was a lunch option. So, I would really hope we could replace that with some kind of paper cup. Okay? And I thank you for listening, and let's, we want a long-term plan at our school district to promote a healthy future. Thank you.
Yes?
I think we have one comment, a question.
Are the speakers done?
We're good, yes. Megan has a question, if you wouldn't mind.
More of a comment, sorry. And I know this is not an agendized item, so we can't engage in a long conversation about it, but I would, President Nelson, like to follow up at the suitable time to address the question of a committee for, the committee suggestion for a multi-agency committee around, and we also had talked in the past about our reducing waste by 20% by 2020, which I just like to say, and I don't even know if it's actually an initiative. So, if we could at the appropriate time agendize that conversation, would that be acceptable?
All right, thank you.
And just because it was very unprofessional, Ms. McElroy and I are in a book group, and we read that book together, which is why I was laughing, so I apologize for that. Some of us.
Thank you. I'll look forward to hearing about a committee. I might join it, okay? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
And just so that people know, Food Service Director Jim Stewart did an extensive analysis of all of this, of the plastic and the extra paper and what's allowable and not allowable in the compost and things like that. So, I didn't want you to think that it had been being ignored, but we can certainly, we did, as you said, take the first step, and we can certainly do much more.
And President Nelson, I'd be happy to send you that board report that was done. There was a report given to the board last spring, so I can email it to you.
All this President Nelson stuff is making me nervous. I love to be called Tyler, just as a reminder. On to item C7B, Ukiah Teachers Association, Teri De Selke.
Good evening. I actually had some things to bring, but I forgot them in my office. So, I remembered what I was going to say because it was so recent that I had written it down. I would, first of all, like to thank the administration for involving so many teachers in the first step of the strategic planning process. I believe that many good things will come from this initial facilitated meeting. One of the items that UTA is on board for is the childcare for staff out of the Young Parent Program building. Lisa Rantala and I met with the Young Parent Program staff today, and we both, all of us that were in that meeting, would love to explore this more as a means to attract and retain staff, not just teachers, but staff. Becoming a staff childcare center for six-week to 18-month-old children would also make the program less of a cost to the district. It would also make it affordable for staff and teachers to live here and have children. I look forward to sharing more information about this, and I'll send something to Deb tomorrow if I remember. The Schools and Community First Initiative needs school boards to make resolutions in support of the initiative, and I remember I talked to you about this last month. This is an initiative that we're still collecting signatures on the ballot for because we've redone the ballot, or the initiative, to take out any homeowner, any small business. This would just be a tax on large corporations that are now getting 1978 Prop 13 tax rates. They are not paying their fair share. So, we, UTA and CTA, would both like to see the school district come up with a resolution to support this initiative. There will be $12 billion that will come to the state each year from this initiative if it passes in November 2020. Forty percent of that will go to education. That means 4.8 billion each year will go to education. So, we encourage the board to create a resolution and support. And I did have petitions, but I left them in my office. I'll bring them by so that you can all make sure to sign a petition. UTA and Ukiah High School students have both asked the board and administration to start a district advisory committee to figure out how we can lower our carbon footprint throughout the district so we can fight climate change together. We would really like to see this happen for our students' sake, and I know that Tyler said that I'm good at browbeating, so this is the third time that I'm really trying to get something rolling for climate change. So, thank you. That's my report.
I just wanted to explain my frustrated face when Teri was talking about childcare because there was a business plan very detailed, lots of meetings with teachers, and it would have been the first year I was on the board, so it would have been eight years ago. And so, we can resurrect some of that because it did, the money did work. At the time, it was not a high priority, you know, perhaps worried about things like salaries, this is my point, clear, when I'm talking about the childcare. Oh, the childcare at the high school, that Young Parent Program that you just referenced. Is that not fair?
Not really, but now it is.
And it came up with a strategic plan, yeah. Okay, nice. So, I brought it up. So, just had to explain my frustrated face. Had nothing to do with your great idea, just that I didn't get it done eight years ago.
Thank you, Teri. On to item C8, our leadership team, leadership team report, Tom Rawls.
Welcome, it's nice to see you up here.
I'm happy to be here, I'm very happy to be here. So, here's my clicker. For those that don't know me, I'm Tom Rawls, I'm the new principal at NACOMAS, and just want to tell the board how much I love my job. I love going to work every day. It's a great school, it's a great staff. So, what I wanted to do was share our three goals from our site plan and tell you how we're working on those. So, goal one is to provide a comprehensive, integrated system of curriculum, instruction, and assessment to improve learning and the teaching process. So, what are we doing to address that in addition to our benchmark and Bridges Curriculum? I'm proud to say that we are on our third cycle of RTI with 95% group. Our staff has worked very hard to make that happen. I know we're at least one cycle, if not two cycles, ahead of some of the other elementary schools. The other thing that the 95% is doing for our school, it's, students are excited about it. We had an assembly last week for first through third, 46 students stood up because they had passed a skill or more at that assembly. It's, when I don't know how to pronounce a student's name, they'll blend their name for me now and use all the hand motions. I did a resolution with some students the other day, and at the end of the resolution, the girls were asking, "What skill level are you on?" In the 95% group. So, that means it's exciting to the students. What else are we doing? Our SSC is modeling lessons in Ihouse and 95% in lots of classes. We completed our first set of learning rounds with first, third, fourth, and fifth grades. The power shut off. Is the reason we couldn't get our K2 done. SSC and our reading teacher are hosting an early literacy class at NACOMAS. The other thing we're doing is working with the principal's network for PLC work. At our site, we are, you know, we, the level of experience is varied. So, we have some people that exactly know what a PLC is and some that haven't heard of it yet. So, we are working together to, we have decided we are a PLC, which is part of the training we've been talking about, is that some people think you do a PLC, but we are a professional learning community. We are sharing common terms, there's our PLC, and the staff is bought into the idea of deepening the PLCs. Goal two, provide a facility that is safe, efficient, and supports student and staff in educational efforts. So, what I want to concentrate on is what we're doing with our multi-tiered systems of support. Tier one, every student can receive an ICAN for being ready, responsible, and respectful. Another thing that we have is that teachers give three Rs, all-stars, they all get to come down to the office and visit with me when that happens. And then, we have positive referrals. Positive referrals are when the teachers make a positive phone call home. Part of the ICANS is that the students collect those rewards, and we have a student store. And the kids are excited about that as well. What else are we doing? We have monthly awards assemblies, we have monthly tier-one team meetings, we're expanding our restorative practices, we have some teachers that are implementing second step in the classroom, which is something new for our site. And we have just purchased a PBIS digital reward system that will be parent engagement because the parents can have an app on their phone, students can have an app on the phone and know how many points they have. It has lots for the school in multiple ways. One way is that we can keep track of who is giving the ICANS, so we can set individual goals for teachers and staff to give so many ICANS per week. Tier two, we have weekly team meetings, we're doing check-in, check-out, our social groups have started. And something else that we have implemented at NACOMAS is a reflect and return area for students. The idea is that we want them in the classroom as much as possible, we don't want them sitting in the office. So, the idea is they go to room 23, they reflect and return, it's a short break, and we get them back to class as soon as we can. And goal three, provide an opportunity for parents and community members to develop partnerships with NACOMAS and ensure regular communication with all stakeholders. So, how are we accomplishing that? Our PTO, we have a very strong PTO president, and it's growing. We just had our first walkathon, which the PTO supported yesterday, first school-wide event that I got to partake in, we had TK through fifth grade all walking at the same time. We're going to do a yearbook this year, we haven't done a yearbook a long time at NACOMAS. And I would also like to report that last year, we did not have a huge percentage of parent, that had, parents that had completed the portal. This year, we're at 98%. So, we're working very hard to engage our parents. Don't know how long I was supposed to take, was there any questions?
Who's in room 23?
That's, it's a wolf den, but, so, if they're going for reflect and return, they wanted to say that this is room 23, so there's a fence down the middle, one half is a wolf den, the other half is room 23. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. On to item C9, acceptance of donations. We have some really nice donations. The first is from the Ukiah Educational Foundation with the name Jean Chubon for $827. We have one from Mendocino College, the Agriculture College of Mendocino College for $300, and we have three donations from the Ukiah Natural Food Co-op to a few of our different schools for the amounts of $183, $106, and $82. So, thank you to those organizations and folks for the donations. There are motion to accept the donations. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Okay, we're into our Ds. Item D1, Ukiah Unified School District Turf Field Committee Report.
And I would like to welcome Steve Berkman to our district team. We're really happy to have you, and we appreciate that you are here and also finishing up at Healdsburg, so thank you for your time and commitment. And I just wanted to remind the board, at the last meeting, you heard a little bit about this topic from one of the committee members as part of the big picture of our facilities, overall facilities plan, so.
Well, good evening, and thank you for having me, and thank you for having me on the team. I'm very excited to be here. So, as Deb just mentioned, we did kind of foreshadow this for you last month, so we'll move through it pretty quickly this evening, leaving you some time for some questions and things as we get towards the end. So, if I can figure out which way to click the button, we'll be all set. Okay. So, tonight, we're going to talk about the committee purpose, the impact to the students and the community members of our athletic facilities and the enhancements we'd like to see, talk about our PE and athletic field facilities, talk about some cost comparisons, and then the next steps for the district. So, the 2017 Facility Master Plan was kind of the launching point for this. A group of students and community members worked on the Facility Master Plan and identified needs at the high school to improve the athletic facilities, especially around the synthetic field. As many of you know, soccer for both the boys and girls was shifted from the fall to the winter two, three years ago. We are the only school in the North Bay League that does not have a synthetic field, and playing soccer in the winter on a grass field can be a bit problematic. And there are some other issues with our athletic fields as well, so that was really kind of the purpose of getting this group together. Superintendent Cuban asked for a committee to be put together. They were tasked with reviewing the master plan and then building on that and looking at the facilities as they currently stand. The group did do a stakeholder survey, and we'll talk about the results of that. And then, the group's committee's purpose was to start exploring solutions. They were not tasked to come up with a final recommendation, they were not tasked with coming to you with the exact cost of the project, that wasn't the scope, it was more to talk about ideas. What could we possibly do? Get some ballpark costs so we can get some idea of where we want to go next, and then go from there. Great group of folks on the committee. I'm kind of sad I wasn't here for this, knowing a lot of these folks and knowing how important this project is to me and to the community and to the students. I would have loved to have been part of this, but I get to tag in at the end, and, but yeah, great group of folks, and I want to thank all of them. But yeah, great group of folks, and I want to thank all of them for their time and effort into this committee. Certainly important work, and it's just the beginning. So with that, I'd like to bring up one of our committee members, Mr. Ray Chadwick, to kind of go through the next few slides for us.
Steve was my chief business officer. I drove him out of here. He's, he's feeling pretty comfortable coming back, though. Is there a laser pen I could hold or something?
You can point to one of them.
No, I'm, I'm, I was kidding. Holy, be so serious. Okay, we, we started out with a stakeholder survey, and that survey went out to 18 people. And if the board is interested, I have the names of those folks, included the chief of the grounds department, the head custodian, Ukiah High Administration, and all the members of the committee. Of the 18 invitations to respond, only eight did respond. Seven of those, though, thought that the best way to go was a stadium, a new regulation soccer field north of the outdoor basketball courts. You know, you probably know that a regulation soccer field is quite a bit larger than a football field. And we have a limited space inside our stadium as it is. We couldn't come close to recreating a regulation field. So even though the expense is just about double of what it would cost to put an artificial surface in the stadium, we thought, in terms of going bigger, going home, there are all kinds of advantages to community and the students, and we'll get into those. You know, we have approximately 1,200 students at Ukiah High that are required to take PE. And having worked there, I've seen rainy day situations where kids were literally having PE class in the foyer of the gym, you know, playing ping pong or some makeup activity. The fields north of the stadium have no drainage. And after the first heavy rain, they're literally swamp-like conditions. You can't put kids out there. Having an artificial surface either inside the stadium or north of the stadium would provide a teaching station for those 1,200 kids. We could have a heavy rain, and it wouldn't affect the condition of the field. Go ahead, Steve. Yeah. The condition of the stadium last year in a heavy rain season was untenable for holding practices. And again, the north field was entirely inappropriate. So the soccer programs literally were practicing on outdoor basketball courts and in the cafeteria because basketball was up, was occupying the gym space. So an artificial surface field would not only allow a better environment for athletic contests, but just to practice for the sport they're trying to play. You know, can you imagine practicing soccer on a 90-foot basketball court? It's, doesn't work. We have approximately 350 kids in the youth soccer program. We weren't able to quantify how many adults participate in various soccer leagues around the community. But having an artificial surface field north of the stadium would provide opportunities for all those kids and for the adults, who of course would pay use of facility fees. We could host tournaments, which would be an economic boon to the community. We know that people who come to Ukiah for athletic contests think they're going to Anchorage, Alaska. You know, Ukiah kids are used to driving to a game and coming home. People who come here with the weekends spend the night. So we have an opportunity to enhance the economic situation for the community. Our families would have an opportunity to watch, you know, games in playable conditions. Less travel expense. You know, we've actually had games canceled, home games canceled, because our field is unplayable. And it's also unsafe. Let's compare the two. If you look at putting an artificial turf inside the stadium, the cost would be three to four million dollars. And we understand that that cost increases every year. It's, it's got a pretty high inflation rate. Football field won't deteriorate during the season. We already have the infrastructure in place inside the stadium. We have proper drainage. We have lights. We have restrooms. We have fences. We have a scoreboard. We have concessions. We have a press box. The cons would be first, the loss of the grass field. Now, I'm the president of the Ukiah Host Lions Club, and we do concessions for youth football. We also sponsor that program. It's the only program north of the Golden Gate where the kids have no fee to play. We get so many compliments about the condition of our grass field. And we also do the concession for the high school, and we get the same thing from, from visiting fans. Installation inside the stadium would probably disrupt some of the ongoing sports like track and field, maybe even football. When you take a look at building a field north of the stadium, soccer and track and field can, can go on simultaneously. The stadium would remain usable during construction. You can even take a regulation soccer field and have two under-nine games side by side. Would be a regulation field for them. We could also host NCAA compliant tournaments because this field would be NCAA, under NCAA dimensions. The cons are, we'd have significant infrastructure costs. We'd have to put in drainage. We'd probably have to come with bathrooms. We'd have to have lights because it's a winter sport. We wouldn't need bleachers because we do have plenty of portable bleachers that would suffice for the typical crowded soccer game. This overlay was created by Gabe, and it shows the regulation soccer field just north of the outdoor basketball courts, where currently a JV baseball diamond is in place. The diamond would be moved to the east, closer to Despina, and would not be an artificial surface field, but would have 280-foot fences. We've heard some complaints from baseball coaches that that may not be a deep enough fence. But we could actually go a little further out, and Gabe can comment on that during a question session. So you know, we think that having the field just north of the basketball courts would ameliorate some of the concerns that would inevitably come from the Despina neighborhood, you know, lights and crowd noise. But it certainly wouldn't be as impactful as what goes on during the football season. Yeah.
Could you go back one slide? So I should know this, but, but does that baseball diamond currently exist?
The baseball diamond currently exists where the soccer field.
Underneath that. So the one you have in the picture does not exist?
Right. We'd have to move the baseball diamond.
And create it and build or do whatever you do.
Yeah, right.
So, okay. The project now would include the turf fields and a new baseball diamond?
Right.
Which would not have a high cost because the field's already there. It's just putting the dirt in the field and backstop. That, that part of the project cost would not be in consideration.
Baseball fields are cheap. Summer fields are not cheaper?
Yeah, significantly cheaper. So funding sources, state facility bonds. You know that AB48 goes out in March of 2020. If it passes, we'd be in line for modernization for existing schools. That bond doesn't cover artificial surface fields. In order to build these, this field, we'd have to go out for a general application bond to fund the project. We also could have used developer fees, but, you know, we're no longer doing that. We are growing, though, which is something new. So it's up to you to determine the funding source. We recommend to you that you pursue a preliminary design plan set through CMAS, which is an organization that would guarantee that we would get the same price as LA Unified for anything that we choose to do, could even be free. That's it. And if you have questions, we'd be glad to take them. We have Gabe right here.
I do have one, I do have one clarification, which may shed a little light on the baseball field. So the intention is not to have that be artificial turf. So that would be standard grass turf. There would definitely be a cost to it, but as Steve said, it would be, in the, in the larger scheme of moving a field to that north area, it would be minimal.
Do we need to add to the project to make it a really nice baseball field as long as we're doing things? Or is baseball field just grass?
Yes. Whether we should do it or not is, I mean, that's not my, that's my, not my call. That would be your call.
Shall I carry on, or do you?
Yeah, go for it.
Is the que, I just want to clear, what are we doing today? Are we accepting the report, or are we funding something?
So tonight, we're asking you to get this direction, if you approve, to go forward with the next phase, to get a study in place, to look at the options that committee's identified, start putting some real cost numbers to those options. So that if we do pass a bond in March, we would already be laying the groundwork to move forward with that project.
And is, is that what you just suggested, something that requires money?
Could be up to $50,000, depending on who we get to do the study. We don't want to go too far down the path, not knowing if a bond's going to pass or not. But it'd be good for us to have this ready regardless.
So the requested motion is to approve up to $50,000 for the next step?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask about the bleachers. I'm really obsessed about the bleachers. It doesn't look like there's a lot of room by, between the baseball field and the, the new baseball field. And what I'm thinking of is if we're going to make some money here and, and help defray our ongoing costs, not defraying the initial costs, by hosting tournaments and stuff, I just want to make sure there's enough places for people to sit. Because in some of the tournaments, you bring your own stuff. But I've been to a lot of tournaments on traveling teams where things are just there. And so I'm just hoping that between those two areas, there's enough space. Maybe it's the same bleacher flipped around, you know, facing one direction for the baseball game and then facing the other direction for the soccer game. But I just don't want us to smush it in there if we're not going to have really room for those portable bleachers.
And Gabe, correct or wrong, but there's room for bleachers on this site as well, right? That's what we're thinking.
Yeah, so on the west hillside, there's, I don't know if you can kind of keep in mind where the, where the field, the current baseball field is. There's almost a terrace slope, so there's an opportunity to terrace a little bit more and potentially put a row of bleachers in there. And either one below that or room for parents come and throw down chairs. And then we could potentially put another line on the, the east side in between the, the baseball courts. You know, definitely would not have seating capacity of the stadium, you know, absolutely not. There's no scenario where we would be able to fit that here. But, you know, talking to Shane and talking to the stakeholders, I mean, I think it would be sufficient. The portable bleachers are, we not only own them, they also, because of their height, they really aren't, we're not required to do a lot of the upkeep and the inspections that the larger bleacher systems would have. I really would be cautious in considering doing a permanent or a larger bleacher system because those are very expensive. And, and I would be concerned that this, this project would, would balloon at that point.
How many did they hold, the portable bleachers? How many people?
I believe, and Shane might be able to have a little bit more information, but I believe it's like 15 or 20, it's something, somewhere in that range. It depends on how big the person is, obviously, but there's usually typically three rows.
15 or 20 people?
Yes.
I thought we were talking 200.
For seating?
Yes. I mean, I was picturing this huge thing that you'd like pull over, you know.
No, the. Yeah, there, there's many of them. So it wouldn't just be 15 or 20. It's 15 or 20 each. I don't know that we'd be able to facilitate 200, but, you know, you definitely, I, I think we'd get enough there to accommodate what we see at our, our games at this point.
We actually bring those out for graduation and for big football games already. And something that might interest you, when the Lions Club is very instrumental in redoing Ann Stadium. And the plan was to put, after the grandstand was rebuilt, to put all benchback seating all the way up. It turned out that people really liked bringing their lawn chairs and just putting them on the, you know, the terrace part of the stadium. So we only put benchback seating in the center.
In part of it, yeah.
And people on the sides bring their own chairs because they'd rather do that.
Trusty Molgar, one other thing I'd add is that with this scenario of having a, bringing in a design professional to help, that, that's really the person that's going to help us drill down and answer a lot of these scope questions. There's a lot of other variables out there. So the lighting is potentially a large cost. And then drainage and grading is the other huge variable. It's one of the reasons why there's such a big range in that. And really, that's the next step that we need to really define this, to hone in on what we want to do based on whatever we decide our, you know, our target budget would be. Without that, we're a little bit dead in the water. I mean, we could certainly continue to pursue it, but we are very resource limited to be able to drill down and get those good, hard numbers and really develop this and flesh this out. And also, doing that gets us close to the point where this would be a DSA project because of, you know, if we're putting in lighting. So it would have to go out to the state. And, you know, one thing the state would require would be a design, design professional. In this case, a landscape architect to actually be the architect of record and, and produce these plans. So this would, again, get us a little bit farther down that road so that when we did actually have the funding, we'd be able to take the next step, get it into DSA, and keep the project going.
None of you were here. You all had left, and you weren't here yet. But when we were making this decision about the field at Ukiah High, we went back and forth, I can't tell you how many times. And for me, I know my vote basically came down to safety because at that time, because of the underneath part of the artificial turf, the assumption was that kids were injured less on grass than on that turf. But they did predict at that point that in five or 10 years, the underneath part of the artificial turf, the kind of the pad that you would use, like a carpet pad, was going to get better and that the safety would end up being the same. But I agree with what you said, Mr. Chadwick, that last year soccer was so dangerous because everything was so wet that it's certainly not going to be any worse than that.
Yeah, it was, the field was unplayable, and they were playing on it.
And they played, yeah. Yeah, I've never seen so many hamstring and so many groin injuries. It was, yeah, it was bad. But, but what are you hearing now? What is the latest on artificial turf and safety for knees and hips and concussions?
So, you know, using the crack, using the crack system, really, it's, it's, has parity with grass systems. And, you know, depending on weather conditions, it can be even better. Another one of the issues in the past was what's called the infill. So that's kind of the aggregate that gets put in between all the plastic. It was originally rubber was one of the, the ones that was.
And it's too hot here for rubber.
Yeah, so, so rubber has questions of toxicity and also the heat. So that's what we were seeing in Southern California. That's where a lot of the failures and the issues were. So cork infill is kind of the new, the most common standard, and that's probably really what we target.
And that's what we need in wine country, right? The cork info. I hope it doesn't smell like wine. Should we have a big cork collection?
I, I mean, if we can get, you know, Tyler to donate, maybe it would.
I'm working on it every night.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I ask everybody to help.
I'm the only one in the room.
Put my kids through college, so keep drinking wine. Zoe, do you have a question?
No, I had a comment. I'm, I forgot half of what my comment was when I was listening to everyone else. But I'm glad that you're starting on this early before, before March so that this work's done. But I am wondering about the baseball diamond, if we are going to move it, if, to work with the baseball people, whoever they may be, so that they are happy with their new diamond as well.
We just became aware of that concern two days ago, so.
Right. I mean, if we're going to redo it, we might as well make it nice.
Right, right. And there is room, right.
So, yeah, and that's something Shane and I have been talking about. And it's something actually Ty brought up at the original meeting, so it's not something we were blind to. And Stephen Summers, who's, you know, Ty's, Ty's replacement, absolutely would be involved. I, you know, again, this comes down to having a design, design professional come in and really tweak it. So what I did with this is I took the, the ideal dimensions that Shane really advocated for. And so that would be the, the, you know, basically that higher, that higher dimension. for, and so that would be the, the, you know, basically that higher, that higher dimension. And I did, took a graphic of the area that really is the only place in our north fields that it would make sense to put it. These are to scale, I put them in, and then I took what's a standard high school regulation field and overlaid it there. There is wiggle room there, there's room to move it around. What we have there is from the home plate to the foul line is 280 feet. You know, what, what I've heard is, you know, 300 or more would be, would be ideal. There is room there to move it around. So that's something definitely, we would make sure all of our stakeholders were involved in. I mean, that's, again, this isn't the end all be all, this is just kind of the vision or an ideal so that you could visualize it. A design professional is really the person that's going to allow us to.
And I do think if we're going to do it, we should have, the soccer field should be regulation size. If we're going to put all this in to it, it should, it should definitely be the right size. And I think soccer culture is you bring your own chairs. It tends to be very soccer culture.
Yeah, but I want big tournaments that make lots and lots of money.
They bring their own chairs.
They'll still bring their chairs.
They'll still bring their chairs.
I, I would think maybe Shane, I'm really curious as to what he'd have to say about the seating because he's, he's mentioned a couple of times what he thought, what, what he sees out there, and I think he really has, has a handle on it, so.
From a seating perspective, yeah, I mean, I think from a high school game, you know, we'd pull in maybe 100 families coming in to watch and support their kids. And so I think the portable bleachers that we have, there's more than enough to get there to, to make that happen.
Megan?
I'd like to move approval of this report and make a motion that we authorize up to $50,000 from a suitable funding source, based on Mr. Verrickman's recommendation, to complete a really awesome design process for both of these fields, including baseball. I don't want to sacrifice the baseball people for the soccer people. That'll become a problem. So that would be my motion.
I'll second it.
You don't need to add all the part about the people.
Okay. Any more discussion? Yes, B.
All I want to say is that being on that committee Carolyn and I were on it has been really helpful to get a broader perspective. Initially, I felt positive towards it, but, no, I feel even, I understand it even better now. And that was really helpful. It was just, at first it was like, well, okay, this makes sense, but there was more to it than, okay, it just, this is a good idea for our kids. And all the people who were on there, all these guys were so helpful and explained things that I never took into consideration, you know, using outside, I mean, I remember going to a lot of tournaments all over the place with my kids and brought that up when they were talking about going to community and spending money and doing all that kind of stuff, bringing in people from, from Humboldt. And so I'm, I'm very happy to see this, that we want to go forward. I'd really like to have that available to us. And the issue about more bleachers, I think as time goes on, if this is as successful as it appears it could be, we can add a lot of different things to it, you know. So, but we need to start somewhere, and this is great, and I really appreciate the hard work that they've done.
Thank you, B. And on that note, I'm going to call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
All right, so let's get into the, item D2, resolution number 10, 2019-20, ordering an election to authorize the issuance of school bonds, establishing specifications of the election order, and requesting consolidation with other elections occurring on March 3, 2020.
So there's a resolution attached, just a reminder of the history. The board heard a presentation at the last board meeting, just a reminder of all of the district's facilities needs. In 2017, we had a, a long process developing our facilities master plan. It involved multiple stakeholder groups. The turf was one of those items that was identified through community, students, staff, and parents. That, that facilities master plan document, I think Deb brought a copy there somewhere, it's also on our website. It was created with the input of a lot of stakeholders, so I'm proud of that work. And at the time, we, we really didn't have a lot of funding sources to consider. So we are on the board for consideration on, for tonight is this resolution ordering an election. We did send a mailer out to all registered voters and also all of our parents in our community, letting them know that the board would be considering this tonight. We want to make sure we have a really open and transparent process. We didn't, did not receive a lot of phone calls. We did receive a few phone calls from some concerned citizens about the tax rate. Originally, we were looking at $60 per 100,000 of assessed valuation. And after hearing from a few community members, we are recommending to the board that we put in the resolution $50 per 100,000, which would generate about $75 million of proceeds from the sale of bonds. So we're asking the board to consider this tonight, and the resolution details everything, so I think that's it. We also have, if anybody has any technical fiscal questions, we have Greg Isom, our financial advisor here tonight, to ask any technical fiscal questions. And I do believe we have some public comment.
Yeah, help me out with this. Do we do this now or after?
Yes, so we do public comment, and then the board will discuss.
Great, we have one public comment. Frank, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. Is it Kunios?
Very close, it's pronounced Kunio.
Kunio, I'm sorry about that.
It's okay. Good evening to all of you. I'm excited about your openness and interest, and basically I wanted to express some interest in how we can work together for greater success. I'm a fairly new resident of Ukiah, was a, for most of my career, a sheet metal apprenticeship administrator, and with my trustees, we managed several training facilities in Northern California. So I appreciate some of your considerations and also always seeking the best training that we can provide. I also, since I was involved in that trade of sheet metal, they do have a specific apprenticeship that's called testing and balancing, that certifies technicians for measuring HVAC systems and doing energy reports on those systems. So there's some good capability there, I just had to put that plug in. I am also a member of the workforce development board that serves this area. Since I retired from my administrator job, I am now, as a retirement gig, I am the director for a program called North Bay Trades Introduction Program. And what that program does is it prepares people for apprenticeship. We, in apprenticeship, we've seen a lot of people that get into it fail out because they are not ready for both a paid full-time job and classes that they have to go to and all the demands that that puts on a person. And we seek out people that are from disadvantaged populations, women, English language learners, low income, formerly incarcerated, veterans, et cetera. And, and we especially try to help those groups to take advantage of what apprenticeship can offer. And it can be huge for those people. It changed my life when I went through an apprenticeship, and it is kind of like going through a four-year degree for a construction career without having to pay tuition, which for those type of people is perfect. And so it's, in that, in that trades introduction program, we, like I said, prepare people for apprenticeship. And, and I'm thinking of one person right now that, just over the last couple of weeks, I was helping her get her first job as a painter. And when she came to us, she had Nova Drive license, no high school diploma, and she had a lot of barriers to get over. And with a lot of help, working with the workforce development board and our training, she's now an apprentice. So those are kind of successes we'd like to promote. And the reason, well, there's many reasons I'm very interested in, in this proposal before you, and I support it. And one of the reasons is I'm looking to, in any type of construction projects, to develop jobs for apprenticeship. And as you, you probably already know, there are state requirements for that that apply in some cases, but we can by policy do much more than that if you choose to. So again, I will go back and listen and I support your initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. B, I see your pen up. Are you going to not start us out with our conversation?
I also wanted to just remind the board, we did a poll last spring of 400 registered voters, and this initiative polled at a high level. So just to remind everybody, that's why we move forward. And then also, we are eligible for state facilities funding, but it requires a match. And I believe we're eligible for about $13 million of state facilities money, and this bond would help us get that match to access those state funds as well. So we're excited to present this to the board for approval tonight.
I can't tell whose pen that is.
Well, I wasn't sure if trustee Diaz had a pen, so I was sharing my pen.
All right.
But I happened to put this one out.
Okay, Anne, what do you have for us?
I just wanted to say to Mr. Kunio, I agree, I actually asked if we could put in the resolution, can we put that we're going to like try and hire locally as much as we can, we're going to use our own kids and everything? And they said, no, that's going to make a ridiculous board, you know, motion and voter approval thing. So I couldn't get it in there, but everybody agrees that, that we really need to figure out how to give our own people experience as they're starting off in their professions, even if it doesn't fit in the ballot initiative. I'm wondering what the bond rate is going to be, if we had a prediction as to what the amount might be?
I'm going to ask Greg Isom to come up.
The amount of what?
Bond rate.
What does that even mean? And if you could explain what that means, thank you.
Bond rate? What do you mean by bond rate? I'm confused. The tax rate?
No, not what the tax rate is. How much are we getting this money for? So, interest rate?
Interest rate. So the way that I cooked together the entire bond program is a $50 per 100,000 of assessed valuation, so we'll get all $75 million in a seven-year period, every two to three years. And I'm using right now a conservative 4.57% interest rate, assuming that, you know, seven years from now, six years from now, interest rates will probably go up. If you could lock in rates right now for a bond, we just did a San Rafael City Schools, High School District bond, and we got it for 2.98 for similar term. So, you know, if the district passes a bond in March, sells its first $20 million, I'm anticipating a rate of maybe 3.4%. But then once again, you never know what it's going to be into the future, so I average 4.5%, which is even conservative from what I think it's going to be, but it just gives us a little bit of cushion.
Thank you. Does that make sense? Sure.
Megan?
Are you done?
Yes.
I was trying to convince someone to vote for this, and I was making something up maybe, so I wanted to confirm it with you.
Good.
I feel like somebody said, probably here, unless I'm totally making it up, that there is a bond that's ending, that taxpayers are currently paying. Am I fabricating this?
So the district has two bonds on the books.
Currently on the books.
Yeah, I think 1997 and 2005. And, and I don't know how it shows on Mendocino County tax bills, if it's just one clump. It's just Ukiah or.
It's one clump?
It's one clump.
Okay, it's still going to show up as one clump then. But behind the scenes, there is a big chunk of the 1997 bond is falling off the books in two years.
So if I was convincing someone to vote for this, I would say you're going to see a chunk, and then one year it'll go up, and then it'll go back down. Is that somewhat accurate?
Kind of accurate. I mean, a lot of it just depends on what your tax base does. And so everything involves your assessed valuation and the growth rates that were assumed in, you know, 20 years ago.
So that's too hard for a voter, so could, could I just say to them that you're paying something right now that's going to go away soon? Could I say that?
Yeah, I mean, I think you can say soon, I mean, it's not going to go away in two years. Even though you have a big chunk falling off in two years, the tax rate's still going to stay relatively the same. But I think in seven years, I think there's going to be a dramatic drop off.
So I'm, for the, maybe the bond committee or whoever's working on this could figure out how to explain that to a voter in a, you don't need to do it right now, but I just think it's important for us to understand, because we, what we're going to be looking at is what shows up on our tax bill. So it would be nice to know.
And Megan, we're working up some frequently asked questions, and that was.
That's my tax question.
Of the four community members who called us, three of them had that question.
Okay.
So we are working up those right now.
Okay, thanks.
I, I'm excited about this. We have 6,000 students that we serve. I didn't really appreciate how much of an impact our schools made on our community. It's when doctors come to look and see if the community is a fit for them, when factory supervisors come, when teachers come, they look at the schools, they actually tour the schools. I had no idea. So they tour the schools. Our schools are rough right now. They need, they need some TLC, and I need, I'm starting to get older, I need, I need my doctors and people to take care of me. I am really excited about this bond. That was, I was kind of putting together some thoughts that I had, and that was one thing, I was like, oh my God, you know, the schools, they're great for the kids because we want, you know, we want smart kids, but we also want our community to be, to be healthy and to grow. I also am recalling the, the, still spooks me, the high school lockdown that we had earlier this year. Our staff was amazing, law enforcement was amazing, but I had two girls there, and that campus is wide open. I mean, there's no security, no security. We'd need an army to surround the high school if we had a truly horrific incident. So that school security is something that really obviously resonates with me. You know, we have the, the modernization of the classrooms, which is really exciting. As I mentioned, the schools are, they're rough right now. They, they need a little help. I am especially excited about our career tech head classes. I utilize auto mechanics in town. As I mentioned, we need nursing staff, we have a nursing pathway that is super important. Of course, near and dear to my heart are the ag programs and the animal science programs. Those classrooms and labs for, for our CTE kids, our career tech head kids are dated. I, it, it's really important that we, that part of our community that chooses not to go to college straight out of high school, that we support them, because we support them because it's important to support them. I'm being real selfish here, I want those kids to come out of school smart and ready to help me as soon as they're done with high school. And then, of course, there's the boring stuff that's also super important. We are discussing a $6 million heater air conditioner system at one of our schools. Fortunately, we are, we're able to put together a crazy plan that is going to pay for it because we did not have $6 million to fix it. It is not the only school with, it's not even dated, it was just a crummy system. But we do have many dated systems that need to be upgraded. We battled Pum-Litiz recently where the school was partially shut down, our classes were moved, that anyways, we'd have some significant updates for HVAC systems, sewer systems, electrical systems. We heard about the sports field, which is really interesting. So at the valuation of $60 per, per $100,000 of your assessed value of the property that we're talking about going for, it was about $12.60 per person for the, I'm really messing this up. For your average person, it would be about $12.60 a month of what it would cost them in additional taxes. And I realize that. And I realize that every penny counts for a lot of people, but for the amount of impact that this money could potentially make for our schools, I am really looking forward to passing this bond. I think it'll be incredible for our community. Are there any other comments? Carolyn?
I would just say, you said it all. I think we have to, we have to look at the total child. I mean, that's part of our job, looking at how we educate them in the classroom, to the soccer or baseball fields, giving them opportunities that students have all over California. We want to be sure our kids have those same opportunities. So, I'm excited about it, too. Thank you for all you said.
You're welcome, Carolyn. Anybody brave enough to try a motion?
I move approval of resolution number 10.
Yes.
And ordering an election to authorize the issuance of school bonds, establishing specifications of the election order, and requesting consolidation with other elections during, occurring on March 3rd.
Second that motion.
All right. Well, one last comment. I am super excited about this. I think this is a great path for our community. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'd also just like to thank the people who are on the bond committee. I really appreciate your extra time on this.
Thank you. Any abstentions? All right. The motion carries. Thank you, Greg. Thank you.
I did want to mention for anybody here watching that the list of needed facility improvements is right on the homepage of the website. So, if you're wondering what this money would be spent on, that's the place to go, right here on that homepage of the website.
All right. So, we're just going to ignore the sniffles and the almost tears there.
That's true.
And move on to our, okay, we are on to item D3, ratification of the tentative bargaining-
We're going to skip E.
Oh, I had it in my notes, and I skipped it. We're moving to E1 and E2. So, we're going to start with E1. I'm going to open the public hearing regarding River Oak Charter School request for renewal of the River Oak Charter petition.
And our director, Scott Pollan, will introduce this.
Thank you. River Oak Charter School has submitted a request for a five-year charter renewal, nine months prior to the expiration of their current charter, as is required by law. So, prior to consideration of renewing a charter petition, there is a public hearing held to receive testimony from the public at large. So, this time, I'd like to invite representatives from River Oak to the podium.
Did we open the public hearing?
I did.
Okay. You did.
I've been waiting all night to call you President Tyler.
That's nice.
I know. I had to practice that. No, I did whisper. I said, do we say chairman or president? I forgot. So, thank you. It's so nice to see all of you again, like I'm home, and I have a new home. So, we have our petition before you. I can take 15% of the credit, because I came in in August, and it's really been a wonderful, wonderful experience, and I'm loving it very much. So, I think it's a worthwhile school, has a lot of different opportunities for different children, and Amy, who's been our past president, has just guided me through it, so.
Just to clarify on the process, we, Scott Pollan, our director of Alt Ed, does use our approved matrix for reviewing charter schools, and in that, they were found to be sufficient.
Yes.
Megan?
Before I get to my questions, can you remind me, we have a public hearing, and then are we approving the petition today? I can't remember.
We're at the next meeting.
The next meeting we approve, okay.
Yes.
I'm not considering not approving, so I was not asking that question, because I'm not in support. But I did have a couple of questions. I like your petition. It's very well-written, it's very clear and logical. I really appreciate the work that you or whoever else worked on it.
Thank you.
Because it's really easy to read. I had a couple of questions. One, I'm not going to belabor, because we belabor it every time, and it doesn't really go anywhere, but the demographics of River Oak don't exactly mirror the districts.
No.
And I see that there's efforts, continual efforts, to try to rectify that, but it's not quite there yet.
No, it's not. And it is slightly growing, and I've had a lot of parent conversations, and with Hispanic families especially, and our chief maintenance person, Antonio Rodriguez, has introduced me to different people. And what we've, what I have found in my short four months is that it's not an educational system they're really aware of. They don't have Waldorf School in Mexico, where many of the grandparents and parents grew up, who are now here. So, it's a new concept for them, and it's, and I think one of the big deterrents before is that there wasn't a lunch program, and there is a lunch program now available. So, I think there will definitely be an increase, but it's just a different concept, and when you're going one way for education, it's, they're not familiar, is what they've told me. It's foreign to them.
And I can understand that. It's a unique educational setting.
Yeah.
So, I understand that. I mean, I am just going to note for the record that Ucaya Unified Socioeconomic, the percentage of students who are socioeconomic disadvantaged is 75%, and River Oak is 52%. And the socioeconomic chain, the percent of kids who are English language learners in Ucaya Unified is 28%, and at River Oak, it's 8%. So, there's a discrepancy there. But what I really wanted to ask about was the, and I want to say this totally recognizing that your school uses a different educational model, I, you know, vaguely, not vaguely, I'm familiar with the Waldorf method, so I know it's really different, but I did notice in your state test scores that they're on a decline. And this last year, your percent proficient was the lowest it's been in five years. So, I'm curious if that's of concern to the school, or you're content with your educational model and feeling like it's going to work out?
No, they are concerned. We were talking about this. In fact, they even have curriculum meetings, what can we do, how can we do? They just went into bridges last year. So, you know, it's taking their philosophy and trying to upgrade it, to adapt it to standards. It's a new concept for them.
Takes some time.
And what some of the students, what I've walked through, is when they end up going in by eighth grade, then they're doing welly well. It's just, but they are working on it. They're having, they're going to be looping next year, and so the teachers are aware. And I did a lot of charts, we've had a lot of meetings, and so it's bringing in that idea to them, and what can we do? We're talking about interventions. You know, we have, and we have our resource teacher and one aide, and we don't really have a math intervention teacher, we have a reading intervention. So, they're looking at that concept.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you.
I would just, you know, belabor it again. I, too, am concerned at the disparity. Last time, I think River Oak was here, we were talking about different ideas and encouraging the students to come up with some ideas, and it was, this was the part of the application that was the most disappointing, because there weren't any new ideas listed that we hadn't already heard before. So, hopefully, by the time you come back in a month, you'll have a few things that you might want to be ready to try out or to pay for. I don't know that you've actually put money behind recruitment.
You know, they, I don't know if they, for the, they've spent a lot of time and a lot of meetings and going to public affairs, and since I wasn't there last year, I really don't know, but we are going forward. And, no, that's all. I mean, I can't answer it. Amy, do you have any idea?
I would say more what you just said.
Yeah.
It's been a lot of time and effort on reaching out to the community financial-wise. I can't say, you know, a percent, but I'll range.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
White educators can go into the community to a lot of public events. It doesn't mean that they're going to be as successful as a former student or an active parent who is from that community, who is literally paid to go do that job.
And we are doing, there is one student that we have from Ucaya High School who went all through the Waldorf, is bilingual, and she's coming, and she's been assisting me, helping talk with parents and letting them know. It's really a fear factor with some of them, and it's because it's so foreign, and it's a different concept. So, I know, that's what, that's their answers.
But the school's not for 18-years-old.
Yeah.
So, I have the educators that have been going out to the community, are actually bilingual.
Yeah.
So, it's not, you know, it's not just a white educator going, it's bilingual and reaching out to schools that-
Right. And it's just concepts, what they've told me. Hi, y'all.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you both.
Tree of Life, next, Nicole. Sorry.
It's getting rough in here. I'm going to open a public hearing for item E2 regarding Tree of Life Charter School request for renewal of Tree of Life Charter petition.
All right. Thank you. Well, Tree of Life Charter also has submitted requests for another five-year charter renewal. And I'm sorry I missed that on the last one, but I have reviewed their charter petition and found it to be sufficient. So, we are opening the public opportunity for them to speak to their charter renewal.
Good evening, Superintendent Kubin and board members. I am Celeste Beck. I'm the principal and one of the founders of Tree of Life. Tree of Life is in its 20th year providing a Montessori elementary educational option in our community. And a few of the highlights of the last five years include participating in two Get Arts in the School program projects. One of those was a mosaic set of piece steps using nonviolent communication, which is part of our social emotional learning program. And the other one is a five-panel acrylic painting of the timeline of life, which integrated history and science with arts. We also received a grant to participate in the Sums Program, scaling up multi-tiered systems of support, and our focus was on fidelity of implementation. And using the Fidelity of Implementation tool, we've gone from a 33% rate of fidelity to 91%. Part of that project was providing extra support to students that had special needs and needed extra services. And as part of that, we became an LEA for special education this year, and we're really liking doing that right now. And I heard your concern about facilities. We were fortunate to get a Prop 39 grant, and we replaced a lot of lighting in our classrooms to LED lighting, and four of our HVAC units are now energy-efficient models, so that's been really nice, too. Most of our students go on to local district and charter middle schools, and they report back to us that they feel well-prepared and that they're having success at those schools. And several of our former students, who are now in their 20s and 30s, have reported back to us that they're grateful for their Tree of Life charter experience, and they attribute part of their success in college and career to their, what they learned at Tree of Life. So, the school staff and board hope to continue to serve our community by providing a Montessori educational option here in Ucaya.
Any questions or comments?
Go ahead. I'm not sure I, sorry.
Going once?
I, let's see, what struck me in your petition?
Pardon?
What's, well, I'm just thinking the themes that came out when I was reading the charter school petition. I appreciate, and the thing is, I'm not sure if this is new or not, but I appreciate that you have a, it seems like you have a kind of a double structure of, you have a board that is like overseas, kind of like high-level, not super on-the-ground, but you seem to have a fairly robust on-the-ground committee. I don't know what you call it, I can't remember what you call it.
Yeah. So, we call it a board cabinet, which is our local school governing board, and it's kind of like a division of our nonprofit. So, this is a nonprofit board that started the school, and then we have the local school governing board that actually meets monthly and makes most of the decisions.
So, I, that's what, I appreciate that structure, because one of our concerns in the past is that the governing board had been so kind of outside of the community. So, it does seem like you have this structure now that has really much closer local control over what happens at the school site. So, I do appreciate that. I don't, again, I don't know whether that's new or not, but I did notice it in here as a strategy to balance the board members, who many, it seemed like a majority of them who lived outside the community. So, I appreciated that part of it. I did notice, likewise, I'm just going to say it again, I know I'm starting to feel like a broken record, but the, and this is true for all of our charter schools, the demographics don't match the demographics of our community, but I did notice an increased presence of Latino students in yours. So, I appreciate, I'm happy to see that. I did notice your chronic truancy rate is 20%. Was that something you're concerned about?
It was, and now, I think it says on there 10.1%, but actually, the data that came out from the state, they're actually showing 9.1%, so.
Oh, so, okay, maybe what I looked at online could have been last year, I'm not sure.
So, we participated in the local county grant to improve attendance, and as part of that, we hired an office assistant who really focuses on attendance. Last year, it was three days a week. This year, it's daily, and that has really improved attendance and brought awareness of that to our parents.
That's great to hear. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. That was all.
Just to reiterate the need for, the law says that every charter school has to reflect the diversity of the district. And in addition, one of your goals is what it means to be an educated person in the 21st century, and I think what it really means is to be able to work in groups and study in groups with people who don't look exactly like you and who might have a different idea. So, I don't think it's against anything of Tree of Life or Montessori to try even more strategies to diversify, because you're going in the right direction, but not there yet.
Right. Yeah.
Having no other comments, I'm going to close this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are requests for a break, so we're going to take a 10-minute break. Having no other comments, I'm going to close this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are requests for a break, so we're gonna take a ten-minute break. Uh, let's get rolling again. So as a reminder to everybody, we were in the E's and we're gonna go back to the D's. So we're starting with D three, Ratification of Tentative Bargaining Agreement with California School Employees, Employees Associations, known as the CSEA.
Well, it's, the TA is attached. We're very pleased to have gotten through twenty nineteen, twenty negotiations with CSEA early on in the twenty nineteen, twenty school year, and the TA is attached.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to accept the tentative bargaining agreements?
I move that we accept the bargaining unit agreement with the CSEA.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much for tonight and all the hard work you do with the bargaining teams. Okay, item D four, Presentation of District Initial Proposal for the twenty twenty-one negotiations with CSEA.
Well, not wanting to lose momentum in negotiations, we're moving right into twenty, twenty twenty, twenty-one negotiations with CSEA. Article nine is the only article we are sunshining. The district has an interest in improving, Article nine is compensation and salary adjustment. The district has an interest in improving employee attendance through an incentive. The district has an interest in adjusting the salary schedule to move towards meeting the upcoming increases in the minimum wage. And the district has an interest in improving recruitment and retention of employees.
Do we need a motion for that?
I move that that is what we propose.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions? Motion carries. Item D five, Presentation of CSEA Initial Proposal for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one negotiations with the district.
CSEA has informed, informed us that they would like to negotiate regarding Article nine, Compensation and Salary Adjustment, Fair and Equitable Compensation. Article twenty-one, Concerned Activities, Modify Language Regarding Concerned Activities. And Article ten, Benefits, Fair and Equitable District Contribution Toward Health Benefits. And CSEA Seeks Option for Drug and Alcohol Treatment for Job Retention.
We don't need to accept these.
I move that we accept this.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We accept those ideas.
And before Mr. Berwickman gets started, I just wanted to thank our employee groups, UTA and CSEA. There's a lot going on in our state right now with, with broken relationships. And I feel really so pleased that we can work together and work through problems together with both of our bargaining groups. And I really appreciate everything that those teams do and, including our district staff and the board. Keep great relationships for kids.
Thank you. All right, we are on item D six, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, AB twelve hundred Public Disclosure for UTA, CSEA, Certificate and Certificated Management, Classified Management and Classified Confidential Employees, known as Unrepresented Employees.
Thank you. So our fall ritual here in the district is we come back, close the books. We then do the formula calculation and hopefully there's some money that shakes out of that. And happily this year there was a three point seven three percent increase according to the calculation. We then meet with the unions and do the tentative agreements. And then we have to come to you with the AB twelve hundreds. It's a chance for us to sunshine the cost of the agreement over the course of the current year and the next two years. We have to be able to say with confidence that we can afford this agreement, otherwise we can't do it. Superintendent and I both have to sign this agreement, say yes, we can do it. The county office also has to sign off on it. So it is, it is more than just a hoop. It actually is pretty important. It's an interesting time because we haven't really done first interim yet, so the budget is still evolving. But I can say with a high degree of confidence that yes, we can afford this as we move forward through this year and the next two years.
Thank you. Questions or motions?
I recommend approval of the AB twelve hundred Public Disclosure.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed and abstentions? That is really cool that we get to have those races, so.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, we have a number of first readings. I, were, item D seven was pulled. So D eight, D nine, D ten, D eleven, through D eighteen. Is there any discussion on any of those items?
And remember that you have time between now and the next meeting to get us any input. Otherwise, we will put those on the consent agenda at the next meeting. But there's still time to give input if you need to.
Is there anything controversial or is this all the standard language coming from CSBA?
It is standard language.
All right, so those have been first read and we will talk about them or approve them at the next meeting. We're in the E's again. E one and two are taken care of. E three, The Fall Two Thousand Nineteen Strategic Plan Local Control Accountability Plan Metrics Presentation. Thank you, Katie.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to finish up our cycle of LCAP metrics for fall of twenty nineteen. Some of the data in the presentation you have already seen before, so we're not gonna go over that data. So we're gonna, this is just showing some of our enrollment. We're gonna skip to slide nine because all of this dibbles you've looked at before. And we did give you a smarter balanced assessment presentation, but at that point, we didn't have final subgroup numbers. So some of the data we'll be sharing with you tonight has those subgroup numbers for the grades three, five, eight that we focus on through our metrics. So this first slide, we wanted to put this in there because some of you have had questions around how are we compared to the state percentages. And you can see that we're on a similar improvement curve with the state that, you know, everybody had some greater gains in sixteen, seventeen and had had some smaller gains since sixteen, seventeen to eighteen, nineteen. The gap, although we have improvements, the gap has increased a little bit between us and the state. And this is including all of our grade levels. So we're at the same trajectory, same pattern, but we do, we're still performing below the state average. This is our third grade English Language Arts scores on SBACK, the percent of students that are standard met or above by subgroup. And we've added in the not socioeconomically disadvantaged. A couple of years ago, that was asked to be added in. And you'll see that the homeless doesn't have a color because we weren't getting those percentages prior to eighteen, nineteen. So now we do have that report out. So what we, kind of in general, what we've seen is that in ELA for third grade, we've had good improvement over time. But we still have some subgroups. Our English Language Learner subgroup and our RFEP subgroup have declined. So we've noticed that as a trend in RFEP, so we're keeping an eye on that. They're still one of our highest performing groups. But just over time, that's gone down a little bit. I also wanted to say this data was, in this presentation, I think I only added one thing, was data that was shared with the strategic planning group that met last week. So this was the same data that we looked at together to kind of start our process together. Um, grade five.
Can I ask a question about the RFEP?
Sure.
Going down, that's, that just seems strange to me, but I was wondering, is that because the criteria for redesignation is different?
It could be, and that's why we need to kind of get stable on that for, for a while, which it keeps changing. You know, we've pretty much changed every year for the past couple, four years, our reclassification criteria because the state has kept saying change and our assessments have been changing. So it could be that. We're not, it's hard to tell. We have been able to, we've had a bigger emphasis on reclassifying students because our goal is to have all students reclassified by fifth grade, and I think we've done a better job at that. So it could be just that we have a few more students in there. Yeah, but that definitely, and our reclassification is changing again, so it's, it's hard to look at that sometimes. But we do wanna keep an eye on that. That's our monitoring. That should be one of our highest performing groups and we wanna make sure it stays that way. Because those students are, many of them are close to being truly bilingual. So overall, we're seeing some improvements in third grade, but we have a couple areas there that we wanna, especially our English learners and RFEP. The Native American subgroup went down a little bit and we wanna keep an eye on that. That is a small number of students, so, but we do wanna keep an eye on that in terms of the subgroup size at third grade. In fifth grade, you can see overall, we have improved. We were at twenty-nine percent and now we're at thirty-six percent. And you can see the groups in yellow, they're flat, so we're just kind of keeping an eye on that. And then our not socioeconomically disadvantaged went down four percentage points. So, and that, that group we'll keep an eye on, too. And, and I should go back. That's a small, smaller group, subgroup. So if we look at eighth grade, we're flat right now and the, I, I didn't put this slide in here, but the state is, we're seeing a different trend in our ELA data because we're, you know, when we started, we only had about twenty-three percent of our students in third grade proficient in ELA. So the graph kind of looked like a J, you know, J curve. We're starting to see where it looks, it's just kind of flat and then it increases a little at, or increases at the high school level. And there's a couple of grades in between there. So we're a little bit flat when we look at our middle grades in ELA. Certain, certainly though, some, we've had some good improvements across cohorts in our ELA in the middle schools. And, and two groups that are red right now for eighth grade were Hispanic Latino and RFEP. So again, we wanna, we're kind of keeping an eye on the RFEP. And some of those students, students fall in both of those categories. If we look at math, so again, you can see the comparison between where we're at and the state. And you can see that in seventeen, eighteen, we had a little bit of a dip where the state was kind of flat, went up one percent and we went down one percent. And that, you know, when we look at our math and through the strategic planning process, everyone was in agreement that, you know, math is an area that we need to now have a stronger focus. And when we started out in fourteen, fifteen, our, the percent difference between the state and us was fifteen percentage points. We're at sixteen percentage points now, so we haven't really closed that. And we have actually a similar at, in ELA, we were at, the difference between us was eleven percent and fourteen percent. So we need to speed up our improvement as well. But math has been an area that we've identified. And we are doing professional develop, we've done quite a bit of professional development in June and in August, and then we have some ongoing collaboratives. But it continues to be an area that we're focusing on. And in our strategic planning, lots of ideas came up around how we could support mathematics. And as we move forward, we'll share some of those with you, but that is definitely an area of focus for us. Although we've had some great gains in third, you can see we were at thirty percent, we're at thirty-eight percent right now. Our Hispanic Latino subgroup was at twenty-three percent and is at thirty-one percent. So we're glad to see those gains. We're down a little bit in Native American and over the three years, but we're up from the year before. And our EL and RFEP are down, and we're really, again, that's, we're not sure if that's partly because of our reclassification criteria. And the demands of mathematics are high, the language demands, and we're all recognizing that. So that's something we've talked about. What are some specific strategies we can implement across the district to help English learner students and all students with the language demands of mathematics? Fifth grade, although we're only at twenty percent, we were at fifteen, and three years prior to that, we were at eleven percent. So we have made gains, but we are still very low. So, and we do see, you know, we're getting students up to thirty-eight percent in third grade, but we're, we do lose ground as we go from third to fourth to fifth, and then we basically are flattening out. And so that's.
Is that curriculum based? I would find it hard to believe.
It's the same trend as the state. So really what we need to do is just get all of our, you know, it's the same trend, and, and we've had some discussions around why that would occur. And it's very sequential, and new concepts get added on top of old concepts. And so we think, you know, that, that's part of the issue, is you just start to fall behind, because it's hard to build off the ones that you don't know. Unlike English Language Arts where many of the activities and strategies and what you need to do is the same, it's just in a little deeper complex, complexity. And so we think that's why the state has that pattern and we have that pattern. But we've made progress, but we've got a lot of way to go, and we have, when we looked at eighth grade, this is where we're, we're, even though it looks good in third, we're concerned about the middle grades because we have lost ground in the middle grades, and we're flat at about twenty percent. So, and you can see there's multiple groups that are struggling in mathematics. So that's been a big part of our focus in the leadership network with the elementary leadership network. We've walked them through a process of instructional planning using data and the PLC process. So that's something that we've been working on this year. And then in grades four and five, we do have PLC study groups for bridges. And I think the challenge for us is they're after school because of our sub issue and really getting, we have small numbers of teachers participating. They're all giving us good feedback that it's really helpful, it's just how can we get more folks participating in that?
But it's shocking how poorly males are doing, isn't it?
Yeah, and that it's a, it's been a decline.
I mean, it's interesting, because I thought that, that when males started to overtake females in math performance, I thought that was in middle school, but I guess it's not here.
Yeah, even three years ago.
A heck of a lot more than just new math.
If we look at our data overall, male students are struggling more than female students.
Which is a nationwide trend.
Yeah, that's a trend, yeah.
Nationwide trend.
Yeah.
Don't you think that's because now there's so much language required in math? And traditionally, no, but traditionally, it's been that they did well in math, but it was more computation and, you know, now we're looking at something different.
A lot of collaboration in mathematics. Students having to work together, explain their thinking. It, it could be that. I think, you know, we see it in English Language Arts as well, so I don't know if it's just math, but, you know, that is a group where, you know, our female students are, and our female students are significantly higher. So we are, we've identified that area, that's the area we're really want, we're working on it this year, but we really want to focus on that next year because it's a great area of concern. You have seen this slide before, we had about thirty-seven percent of, of our students re-designated by fifth grade, and that was a four percent increase over the last three years. We do not have our official LCAP scores yet, and I will share those with you through Deb when we get those. They should, they're supposed to be out very soon, I was hoping they, we could squeeze them in there, but we haven't gotten them yet. And, whoops, and you've already seen these two slides, so if you could skip to page twenty? Or slide twenty?
We don't have slide numbers.
Oh, they're tiny.
Oh, at the bottom.
So the last time I presented to you preliminary scores, these are the final scores. So overall, our eleventh grade ELA scores have gone down over the last three years. So we've also seen that in the percent that are considered college-ready, which is standard exceeded, not just standard met. So we're still, you know, looking at that. And then although our math is down two percent overall, we're, we've moved back up to eight percent. So that is one way that students, if they score standard met or above, they don't have to take the placement test at CSU colleges. So it is a useful tool for students, and it also is an indicator if they're ready. And then this is broken down by subgroup, and you can see because we went down overall, most groups have gone down. Some are flat. And if we look at math, we're, we're kind of just flat right now. So that's, you know, those are two areas that we want to look at as we're trying to get students college-ready. Sure.
Are all students taking the EAP now?
So it's part of the S back, so they, they take the, yes, they take the S back and then they have to have standard met. It used to be this little extra test that they had to agree to do. So it's good that they don't do that anymore, because some kids were, didn't understand the importance of that. Good question.
Now, this is taken in eleventh grade?
Yes, yeah, so this is last year's eleventh grade students. And this is standard met or above, so.
No, it's standard exceeded.
Sorry, standard exceeded. When we look at the percent of standard met or above, we're at forty-seven percent, so thirty percent of the students are, are there. And this is the district.
Right, but why are we suddenly using a different standard in the middle of this? Is there?
Because this is an indicator for college readiness.
You need exceeded for college ready?
Yes. It's a state requirement.
Just the way the state does it?
Yeah. It's a.
Right, but I mean, you could take an entry exam and pass it.
You could.
You could. And, and and students in English Language Arts, students that score a level three, I think even a two, can take the ERWC, which is the Expository Reading and Writing Class at twelfth grade. And that, if they get a, I think it's a C or higher, then they also can waive their entrance exam, and they can go straight into, you know, English one hundred.
And you take that instead of English four? For those of you who haven't gotten.
Correct, yeah, twelfth grade, that happens in twelfth grade, correct. So if we look at the percent of students that are A through G, I have this broken out both by, you have seen this before because we don't have the new results. They're almost out, they're just not quite out yet, so we'll share that with you, and same with the new SAT. And you saw this before the A through G rates, so we've already looked at the A through G completion. What's new in the slide is on page, I don't know why that one doesn't have a number.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Is, and we, and we report Ucaia High Schools because most of our, our, most of our schools, South Valley and UESA is too small to report, so we can't get reporting numbers on them, so we just report the high school. It's very small, like a couple students. So if we look at that, we were at eighty-seven percent, we're down to seventy-seven percent, but, whoops, sorry. We have more students taking AP exams, so, and we have more exams being taken. So students are trying, yeah, students are trying more, which is good. So although that is going down, we have more students attempting exams. And then when we look at this slide, this is percent of AP tests, all of the tests that are three or higher. And you can see that went up a smidge. And, you know, in sixteen, seventeen, we had seventeen percent of students, and grades ten through twelve, now we have twenty percent. So in the middle year, we had a little bit higher. But we know that that's some of the reason we're seeing that decline, but we're glad that students are challenging themselves and taking advantage of AP. And the next slide has a breakdown by subgroup. So that you can see, and interesting, on the AP assessments, the male, female, the gap is the reverse in eighteen, nineteen.
Somebody's got to look at that.
Yeah.
What the heck?
It's a smaller number, you know, this is a smaller number, it's not as large as it, because it's just AP.
But still, I mean statistically speaking, if you got a hundred and fifty kids, something's going on.
Yeah, yes. And we'll see what it looks like next, you know, nineteen, twenty, if it's a real trend or it's just a year. SAT, we don't have the new benchmarks for SAT, and I, I don't try to calculate those early. We do have the results, but they're by different test administrations and grade levels, and it's hard to report accurately, so I, I wait for the state input. And those, the way we look at that has changed, they now have a benchmark, ELA and math benchmark, instead of the fifteen hundred. And the same thing, ACT results are not available yet. On this one, the new, on slide thirty-one, is we had in eighteen, nineteen, twenty-six percent of our students completed a CTE pathway. That means they completed two courses in a pathway or more. Most of our pathways are two courses, we have a few that are three, and that's really exciting to see that. And we don't have our new grad rate quite yet, we're about to get that out, and we'll report that out to you probably in December. And for the CTE pathway completion, you, what we were, we looked at the percentage of the students that did complete the CTE. And we're happy to see that that does pretty closely mirror the population at Ucaia High. So we have equal representation of students in CTE pathway completion. And this slide is a little bit different. This is looking at the College and Career Readiness Indicator, and we're about to get that data coming out in December. But looking at the class of twenty eighteen, we had twenty-three point two percent of the students that met college and career-ready by a CTE pathway. So we're really happy to see that. And it, it's a combination of ways that you can get to college and career-ready. So we're excited to see all the effort that's been put into CTE and, and really seeing kids complete those pathways. And again, this is just breaking that down by subgroup, this data comes from the state. And you have seen the graduation cohort rate data. If you go to page thirty-six, this is our attendance rates. And you can see we've had a, we're pretty flat in our attendance, but our chronic absenteeism has decreased. And we're really excited to see that because we've had some good decrease there. And the final state data, this is our data that we compile, is coming out, and we'll share that with you as well. And if you look, you can see the attendance rates for some groups have gotten better and some have not. But one group, although it's not a huge difference, but we're happy to see a positive trend with our Native American students. We've had a lot of workaround attendance with our Native American students and our Native American liaisons and our Native American counselor. And when we look at chronic absenteeism, we can see that that went down last year in eighteen, nineteen for our Native American subgroup. So there's been a lot of effort put in there, even though that's still very high, we want it to be a lot better. It's nice to see that trend going down because we've been seeing it creeping up for the last couple of years. So we, you know, really want to thank the Title VI Committee and the counselors who've worked really hard with those students. We've got a long way to go, but we're, we're getting better.
Katie, before you cruise too much further.
Sure.
The decrease in chronic absenteeism of two point four percent. Over the years, we've made all kinds of different investments with people and ideas. Is there anything specific that can be attributed to that decrease? Or is it the shock and blast, or have you had a chance to look at it yet?
So today, because the state numbers just came out today, so I started diving in a little bit, or not today, two days ago, and I wanted to look. And I started looking at kindergarten. We had that, we had lower chronic absenteeism in kindergarten last year, and there were some strong efforts to focus on kindergarten. Yoko had a really neat contract that they worked with parents on, and they did a orientation in the beginning around attendance. So I think that's part of it, and we'll do some further analysis. But that, that was really good to see the kindergarten rates, because we know that sets the pattern for attendance as well. We always know kindergarten's high because they're little and they get sick, and, but we're really happy to see that go down a little bit. But I haven't had a chance to further look into that.
It would be, when you do have a chance, it'd be awesome if you'd share that with us, because I know we've talked about it as a whole often, so it'd be really interesting.
Was looking to see if Jason was here, if he had any other comments on that.
Katie, I'll just add that we also reduced our suspension rates at a couple of our schools, and often our, some of our chronically absent students are also repeatedly suspended. So I'm, I haven't done the exact analysis, but I'm sure that that has an impact on it as well.
Yes, and so I'm going to share that data with you, because we, you've seen the dropout data, we'll get new data very soon on that. But we did see a significant reduction in the suspension rate, so we had an overall decrease of two point five percent.
Slide forty-one.
On slide forty-one, thank you. Our expulsion was up a smidge, but that's kind of hard, those are very small numbers, we'll dive into those a little bit. And, but you can see we had a good decrease. And if we look at our overall, and our Hispanic Latino decreased, our white decreased, our Native American decreased by five percentage, five point seven percent. And there's been a lot of work there, so you can see across that we've had some really good reductions. And, and there's been great effort from all of our school sites. But especially at our middle schools last year, we saw some really good improvement. And then we didn't have so much fighting last year at the high school. In seventeen, eighteen, we had kind of a hard year.
It's odd to me that it went down one point eight percent, and yet our, that didn't have that much of an influence on our attendance rate. I guess it's just such a small number that it's not going to have that much of an effect.
Yeah, our attendance percentage stayed about the same, but these kids who are either absent repeatedly or suspended repeatedly changed. You would think it would have an impact, but it is a small, it's a small population of kids.
It's not that many, yeah, thank goodness it's not.
And these rates are unduplicated, meaning these, a student could have been suspended once or more. once or more. So it's the, you know, some of them are suspended more than just one time, and then that can lead to chronic absenteeism as well.
Suspension rate is unduplicated.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of interesting.
That's how it's calculated by the state, so we use the state calculation. You can look at it other ways, too, though, like your number of incidences, but this one is unduplicated. And this is the expulsion rate data, and you can see we have a slight increase, and, and students can be in multiple categories. Then the last slide is our parent involvement, and I think we shared this last time, so we're, we're definitely working on that right now to get more parents involved in our decision-making. And that's it. And we will come back to you with, there will be some data that's coming out right now, and the dashboard will be coming out in December, early December.
The dashboard.
The California School Dashboard with the color gauges.
So you have the data for it, just not in the dashboard format?
Yes, and there's different, just so you know, there's, the numbers may look different, because there's different criteria on how that data is pulled for the dashboard, like what students are included in that, and so it looks a little bit different. It was confusing me a little bit today myself.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
No, we don't need to do anything. Okay, that was interesting. Questions or comments?
I'm concerned about middle school boys. And I'm interested in hearing the strategies. You know, because maybe there's some interesting strategy that somebody's tried, like having an all-boys, two-week math lollapalooza over the summer. Only I don't think they call it lollapalooza.
Be a mathapalooza.
Mathapalooza.
All right. Item E four, update on the strategic plan redesign.
So I listed in the background, we had, Steve's Wayback facilitated a two-and-a-half day workshop for us. It was great. Zoe and Carolyn were there. Megan stopped by, Anne stopped by, and it was a really great engaging process. And there's a lot more to be done, but I'll just give you a quick summary. And Steve is a Jedi master around organizational management, and it was really fascinating to watch the process. And what came out was an overall goal around college and career readiness, and with continued emphasis on literacy, but a higher emphasis on math. We really need to go at math like we have gone at literacy. So we have some more work to figure out, to define that. And with all that special emphasis and lens on equity, making sure that we're looking at equity and equal access to classes and programs and all of that, the vehicle that we would like to use to accomplish all of that is our professional learning communities, not light PLCs, but deep implementation of professional learning communities. We had four experts come. I'm really grateful to those people. One came from San Bernardino Unified. The superintendent let him come up and be an expert for us. We had a former principal from Long Beach here, who's now a superintendent in a different county, in Marin County, that was a principal of Alvarado Elementary, which we visited in Long Beach. We had Dr. Cindy Pilar from UC Davis here, and, oh, we had two people from California Ed Partners. And so it was nice having some outside experts to reflect with us, and I really appreciate them coming to Ucaya. They did it really out of the goodness of their hearts and because of their relationships with various people here.
Were they here the whole time?
They were here for one day, just the first day. And people had an opportunity to rotate through them as experts, and they created a lot of, just different thinking, and it was, it was really great. We can't bring everybody to visit, so we brought people here, which was nice. So vehicle to accomplish that was through PLCs, and we talked about, a lot about trying to reach at least a twenty percent reduction in the number of initiatives that we have in our district. So we talked a lot about that. We have a hundred and twelve actions in our plan, trying to reduce that by twenty percent, but with this being the focus. So that has been weighing on me for a long time, but especially a renewed interest last week, and when we have employees who come with, with additional ideas, I'm really trying to challenge them to not add more. It really was a plea from our staff. We had the majority of, over half of the people there were teachers, and so everybody is feeling that in our district, the number of initiatives and actions we have in our plan, and trying to really focus, so we can go deeply into college and career readiness and not have so many different initiatives that may take us in other places. So it'll be a challenge. We did an activity with our leadership group last year, and we left with fourteen new ideas.
Oh, dear.
And so anyway, I really want to challenge all of us, and including the board, as we go through this process, to really think about that. How do we really focus and narrow, so we can get to all of these very important things?
Well, there were two words that we came up with after you all reported back on your trip to Long Beach last year in San Bernardino, and one of them was focus. I don't even remember the other word.
Yes.
What was the other word?
Diliterate or something like that.
Something like that.
Was it rigor?
Warm and demanding.
Warm and demanding?
Warm and demanding, focus.
Yeah.
Yep. So I look forward to that. Steve is helping work up what I just said into like a one-page document, and we had several people volunteer to be on the writing team, so I'm going to be working on that tomorrow. We'd like to have a small group, and Megan has volunteered to, to work on that as well. And so we'll be convening probably after Thanksgiving. There's a lot going on. Steve wanted to do it next week, but we have parent-teacher conferences and trying to pull, we have our principals' network next week, trying to pull teachers out again before Thanksgiving is hard. So we will draft. It will come to the board multiple times for input, and we will be going out to stakeholder groups for input as well. So it's kind of, tonight is kind of nice. We have two pretty significant chunks this year that we are working on, our facilities' master plan through hopefully passing a bond, and our new strategic plan. And both of those will take us into the next several years. So that is my report.
Very cool. Do we have any board member, we do have a board member report.
No, no, not a, if possible, just for a couple minutes, I'd like to hear from Carolyn and Zoe, who were there the whole time. Could you just a quick report or experience? Sorry.
Well, I just wanted to say, it was extremely energizing to be here. The, what really just blew me away was that we had all these groups talking about what we thought was the most important and what we should focus on, and then when we got together, we were all of a similar mind, you know, which was just really fascinating. And I went to several groups that talked about math and some of the, you know, real thoughtful suggestions about what we can do to look at math. Like we, we have focused so much on reading, and we've hired reading teachers and given prizes for the kids that read the most books, and we don't do anything like that for math. So it's like, you know, it's time that we really focus on math. It was great. I was tired, but it was great.
Yeah, I, I agree. It was, it was a really great three days, very different than six years ago when we did it. Remember the whole process when we did it six years ago? Very different, but it, it was, I felt like people were really honest about what was working and what was not. I really appreciate you teachers being so vulnerable and just putting it out there, that we are part of that. So it was, it was great. Like Carolyn said, when we did the, you know, Steve with his enneagrams, this and that, and he had us all moving about, doing, you know, from this group to this group, and refining, refining his question, and it was pretty amazing that everybody came up with the same, basically the same statement in all, all the six groups. It was, it was great. It was really worth the process.
I must say, though, we were, you know, trying not to talk too much as board members, and mainly just listen. That was really hard.
Oh, good. Thank you.
And Carolyn, do you have an additional board report?
No, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you guys so much for spending a tremendous amount of your, I think it was three days that you guys were part of that, and the, the rest of the crew that did it, but the pay is a little on the low side for you, too, so thank you for being there. Okay, so no more board reports. We're moving on to item G one, student expulsions.
You skipped me in my superintendent's report.
We thought that was it.
Oh, no, that was item E four.
Sorry, sorry.
I was doing so good, and I still skipped something.
Just quickly, I just wanted to say, I'm really grateful to our staff. We had, we obviously lost three days to the power shut-off. But Gabe Sherman, just a huge kudos to you and the staff, your staff, for everything that you did, and the food service staff, too. We actually wired our generator on Saturday night to the central kitchen, so we lost very little food. My biggest concern is our lost instructional days, of course, because we only have our kids for a hundred and eighty days of instruction. But Gabe, just huge thanks to you and the staff. The city of Ucaya is just an amazing partner. Gabe attended, or was on a phone call with almost all of those meetings, all of them. They had the most, seemed to have the most reliable information, so we really appreciate the city of Ucaya for all that they did to help get information to us, and to Doug for all of his work in getting communication out in a timely way. So we learn something new every time. Hopefully, we won't have many more of these. We might, but we learned a lot through the process, and we're, we are going to do a staff survey next week to get the, the staff's feedback on communication and what we can do better next time as well. We did get some feedback from parents through various channels, but if you have any for us, please feel free to email me. And it's a new and interesting time that we're all living in with that, but I appreciated everybody's patience. And then we had Senator McGuire. We invited Senator McGuire to come and visit our central kitchen yesterday. He was really instrumental in passing the legislation that allowed us to do free, free food for all, and so we wanted to thank him and let him see what it looks like and how many more meals that we're serving. So they were super impressed with our central kitchen, and he got to talk with some of our food service staff and Jim Stewart, and learn more about how many more kids we're feeding. So that was super exciting, and I think I'll just leave it at that. I'm excited for our future in the district.
Thank you. I'm glad we went back to you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now, not so fun, student expulsions, item G one. Is there a motion to suspend the expulsion of student AA 11142019?
I so move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. And we're done with that. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the consent calendar.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. We're on to planning.
So the next regular board meeting is on a Monday, Monday, December sixteenth, and that has to do with the change that came about with our organizational meetings, or just this, it's going to affect us just this year, and then I think the following year it won't, so. So it's going to be Monday, the sixteenth. So we will do a agenda, and it sounds like we're going to do that on the twenty, December eleventh.
I'm sorry, so there's a meeting on the twelfth, or not?
We do not have a meeting on the twelfth.
How about Ann and maybe somebody else?
Ivan did it a while. I can do it on the eleventh, you said?
Yes.
I did it last time.
Twice in a row of Megan would be too much. And what, I'm sorry, what was the meeting date for that? Was that Tuesday, this, Monday, the sixteenth?
At four thirty? Four thirty?
Yes, it should be four. Four. It should be four. Right, we have our election of officers at that meeting.
So four o'clock?
We usually do that one at four.
So who else? Who's the third one?
So.
I'll, I'll do it.
Okay.
I was going to say, I don't, I won't be here. I'm not going to be at a meeting.
I'll be here for a meeting. I'll be here on the eleventh.
So we do not have a meeting on the twelfth?
No meeting on the twelfth.
Sorry, we have a meeting on the sixteenth.
I have a meeting on the sixteenth.
Did we know that?
Yes. We had to change. I missed it somewhere.
Maybe we did. I told you I had the twelfth.
Okay.
All right, impressive. You're.
All right. Are there any other items that we want to add to the future agenda that somebody wants to bring up?
Well, even though the superintendent keeps telling us to focus, it, it does feel to me that this is not new, but we're hearing from multiple places that there's an interest in some sort of committee to look at reduction of waste, climate change, that kind of stuff. I'm not necessarily thinking that's something that the district has to spend, I, I don't really know what that looks like, but I feel like it's just sitting out there as a topic. I don't really need to involve the board if the board doesn't need to be involved.
Yeah, I think we should think about how we want to do it, accessing energy from other people besides our teachers and staff.
And administration.
And administration.
I guess my question, and I meant to ask it, and then it slipped my mind, is if we're going to form a committee, it'd be nice to have a goal for the committee, and I was, I don't know if it, I didn't feel like it was real folks, it's pretty broad, and so I think it'd be nice to think about it, to see if it's something we want to do, if there's a, you know, if there's a focused effort, I'm not sure. I mean, I like the, like the concepts behind it, but it's kind of like, okay, let's go save the world, and it's like, okay, that's a big task.
But we're going to be very busy with this law thing, and I think adding more and more every time makes it a little bit difficult.
Would it become part of the strategic plan, or it wouldn't?
It could. I also think that it would be nice to communicate what we have done.
That's what I'm thinking.
Because we have done a lot. We have electric buses, we, I mean, I could rattle off like six or seven things. We're installing solar at three of our school sites.
That's actually what I was thinking.
Waste reduction by twenty-twenty, so.
I mean, is that really happening, the waste reduction by twenty-twenty? I kind of think someone's quietly doing it, and we just haven't talked about it.
Right, so I- Right, so I'm wondering if we want to do some communication around that. We have our no idling policy. We've put signs up at all of our school sites for no idling. So I feel like we have done some things. Is there more that we can do? Probably. I am concerned, though, about staff time to facilitate a committee and.
I, I agree, and I.
Just because of all that we have going on right now.
No, I totally agree. And I was also thinking, when, when people have said to me, you know, people really, my book group, are you doing something on, and Zoe and I were like, yeah, we did this whole solar panel thing. Like, it was a whole big deal, but we didn't, we haven't communicated that. And I couldn't even remember the details myself to communicate it very well. I'm like, I think we're doing something cool. And I couldn't, so I, to me, it does seem like packaging, in some sense, the stuff that we are doing, because it's notable.
And Jim did all of that work, Jim Stewart?
Yeah, he did.
On, we, he tried, didn't we do a trial run on the forks that?
Well, we did get rid of, as she pointed out, we got rid of those little.
Yeah.
Yes.
But he tried the.
Compostable, right. And we couldn't get people to take them.
So we can't do it.
Well, and they're not compostable in our system.
Right. But we made some progress in getting rid of those packages. We're going to do solar panels. We're doing electric buses. We did.
Yeah, that's been ready.
Well, I have to write an article by tomorrow for Doug. I'd be happy to write it on this.
Oh, that's great.
That would be good.
So.
One page, Ann.
It sounds like we have our sacrificial goat. Ann, thank you for doing all the communication work, maybe.
I guess what I, I guess what I was trying to also, so I totally agree, we need to communicate what we're already doing, but I think if some group of well-meaning people wanted meet, I don't think we should get in their way, I guess. Without, I mean, we're on board with people meeting.
But they can't really, they can't really meet without a certain amount of knowledge of what's happening in the district.
Well, we need to start there, for sure.
You know, I certainly, a lot of the actions, some of the actions that we've taken, the students, Diego being one of them, came forward and said, hey, we're done with the plastic silverware stuff. What can we do about this? We certainly are here to listen and possibly take action. So a group could get together without us and come forward and go, hey, this plastic water bottle, Tyler, we talked to you about that last month and the month before.
Get rid of it.
Get rid of it. So I don't think it necessarily has to be an authorized group of the district to come forward and make really good suggestions that, that we could take action on.
That, I agree. I mean, the no idling people did the same thing. They came here and said, put signs up, and we're like, sure, good idea, let's do it. So.
But also, when we're, when we are looking at some modernization, not, not this year, probably not even next year, maybe at that point, we would want to. Ask them to weigh in? Yeah, because at that point, when we're doing, and they talked about that, the modernization of schools, that maybe there are some ways that we could be more.
In that sense, maybe it's linked to the bond. Once the bond passes, that could be an element of how we want to implement the bond. And we can have a committee then.
We have had our lighting project, you know, our Prop 39 lighting projects. We really have done a lot as a district. There is always more we can do.
I've got my reusable plastic right here.
The challenge really is, you know, forming another committee, and because we have two major projects going on right now, in addition to the other stuff that we're managing.
Could we say that, that we, we can communicate what we've already done in a little package in some way, either Ann's article or our communications director?
Well, that's just one piece of it, though, but we should also have it on the website, you know, like a little call-out, click here, and then maybe even at the end of the call-out of recapping everything that I'm going to mention, too, maybe we could even have a thing about communicate your idea, so that there's a method for people to, to send something in.
And then I'm wondering if it, after the bond passes, we can deliberately, I assume there's another step. Once, once the bond passes, we have to have people help figure out what we're going to do with it. And that could be a specific element of it around. Could, but, so I'm just saying, we can put aside the concept of people investing in climate-friendly modernization to, after the bond, because then, then it will be folded into how we're going to spend our money.
Well, I think we would identify how we're going to spend our money first, and then maybe as we're, after that, we're going to do some project at a certain school, then there could be. But I think first, we want to identify the projects. Which are already identified in the.
They are, exactly. And there are energy efficiency projects identified in the facilities' master plan.
So as far as adding something to the agenda at a future agenda time, we don't have anything real concrete.
I don't think so.
All right, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, guys.